Um, tell me a little bit about why you're here.
Well, basically, we're just here to see what's going to pay in fire. Put a hold on the Fire and Police Commission from some of their, uh, attempts to appoint a Fire and Police Chief. Basically, United, we're just here to support the case.
What is it? We have to be on the air.
Well, he's got a very, very difficult position, and I understand the things that he's trying, you know, the aspect of how he's going to handle this, uh, for in almost two days of visiting the district. He still has to have his department, you know, still needs to protect his body, he's been, has worked for the city full-time, and so he gets this information, being the actual property, which might be...
What, um, what is this proposal taking to do right now? Does he want, he want a couple of people resign, is that it, or wants to eliminate some of the fire department?
Well, he was trying to unilaterally, uh, circumnavigate the law and try to eliminate the Fire Chief, and this is why, like, this is why we had our big...
Yeah.
And, uh, he came out with some slanderous remarks, uh, by himself, and really doesn't have any chance of developing, uh, we can call it, uh, two weeks. So what does St. Texas are from now on? I don't know. It's been a pretty quiet two weeks from here.
Okay. All right. Have they ever heard anything about the Fire and Police Commission, or what do you call that?
The Fire and Police Commission. Right now, they're the ones that have the ability to, um...
Do we have a flag of allegiance? Flag of allegiance?
To the Lord, America, in all who have changed, one nation under God, in the heavens above, with whatever things are thrown at.
Mayor?
President.
First ward.
Here.
Second ward.
Here.
Third ward.
Here.
Fourth ward.
Here.
Fifth ward.
Here.
Sixth ward.
Here.
My friend, you're ready?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take the, uh, items on the regular agenda first, and then the public hearing will be last order of business. First item, please.
Whereas Lynn V. Evans passed from this life on Saturday, February fifteenth, nineteen ninety-two, and whereas Lynn was born in Fulton and lived in Chittengale for nineteen years before returning to Fulton twenty years ago, and whereas Lynn had worked in the City Chamberlain's office for the City of Fulton for over fourteen years, and whereas Lynn served as Union Steward for the Civil Service Employees Association for Fulton City employees, and whereas she was a member of the Oswego County Tax Collectors Association, and whereas Lynn was a stabilizing force to her family at City Hall, as well as all City of Fulton employees, and whereas Lynn's strength and courage during her fight with a very serious illness makes us all stop and think how trivial our problems are in life when we look at what Lynn faced, and whereas Lynn's strength will be our strength as we carry on in life with our day-to-day struggles, and whereas the mayor, all members of the common council, all employees of the City of Fulton share a great sense of loss for our fellow worker Lynn V. Evans, and whereas we share this loss with David, her beloved husband, her parents Fred and Alta Rath Verro, her brothers Frank and Fred Verro, and her sisters Marie Kuehl, Janice Lincoln, Alta Hamlich, and Angela Sorrentino. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon the official records of this common council meeting of February eighteenth, nineteen ninety-two, and a copy of it be transmitted to the immediate family of the late Lynn, Lynn V. Evans.
I'll move that. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, indicated by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Unanimously carried. Next item, please.
Whereas at a common council meeting held on February fourth, all bids for repairs to the Recreation Department Storage Building located at Raleigh Beach were referred to City Engineer Samuel A. Patain for his review and recommendation of award to be returned to this council at the regular meeting of February eighteenth, nineteen ninety-two. Whereas per his memo dated February eleventh, City Engineer Sam Patain recommends awarding the bid to Wilkins Construction Company, Camillus, New York, in the low bid amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars, and whereas the common council agrees with the recommendation of the city engineer, be it resolved that the repairs to the Recreation Department Storage Building located in Raleigh Beach project is hereby awarded to Wilk- Wilkins Construction Company in amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars.
Any discussion? May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor, indicated by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Unanimously carried. Next item, please.
Resolve that the common council be authorized to pay the following bills: Jones Chemicals, Leroy, New York, twenty-six hundred dollars for chlorine; Syracuse Ladder and Scaffolding Company, Syracuse, New York, sixteen hundred ninety-five dollars for replacement of the hot patch machine engine; General Code Publishers, eleven hundred thirty dollars and eighty-two cents for supplements to the new city code book. All the above items are budgeted but over the thousand-dollar charter limit, which requires the council's approval.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Bucky about the, uh, hot patch machine and, and how old is that machine?
Two years old.
Is there any warranty or anything on it?
No.
Was there a, what, a year or anything?
There wasn't before, yeah. I think it's ninety-nine.
Oh, okay.
Anything further? Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicated by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Unanimously carried. Next item, please.
Resolve that City Clerks report for the month of January nineteen ninety-two in the amount of three thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars, forty-nine cents be received, approved, and placed on file.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor, indicated by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Unanimously carried. Next item, please.
Note that the City Clerk has advised this council at this meeting of February eighteenth that proper letter of disclosure pursuant to section eight oh three of general municipal law has been filed with him by the following employee, and that said disclosure is entered into the minutes of this council meeting of February eighteenth as a matter of record, firefighter Richard Allen of the Nuisance Wildlife Control Trapper.
Next item, please.
Whereas a resolution was passed on January seventh, nineteen ninety-two, which amended section C fifteen of the City Charter to read that all persons appointed to offices or employees of the City of Fulton, unless otherwise provided to the contrary in chapter, shall be on probation for a period of one year, and may be discharged from office during that period without cause by the mayor. The reason for the discharge need not be specified by the mayor in the notice of discharge, and whereas the common council wishes to change the one-year probationary period to six months, now therefore be it resolved that the resolution passed on January seventh is hereby rescinded, and the following resolution is hereby adopted. Resolve that a city policy be established that all new hires must complete the maximum probationary period of six months.
Any discussion?
This, uh, just falls in with, uh, civil service law. The first resolution we passed was a, a little bit of a mistake on our part. We really didn't look into it fully, I don't think, and, uh, we'd like to move ahead with this resolution here.
All, motion?
I'll move it.
A second? All in favor, indicated by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Unanimously carried. Next item, please.
Resolve that the mayor be authorized to discuss with the City of Oswego the proposed licensing of dam number two power plant in Fulton, New York.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicated by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Unanimously carried. Next item.
Whereas the City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of February eighteenth at seven-thirty PM in the common council chambers of the municipal building in Fulton, New York relative to the proposed adoption of local law number one of nineteen ninety-two, which would limit the powers of the Fire and Police Commission, and whereas because of the anticipated large attendance, the public hearing was moved to G. Ray Badley High School Auditorium for resolution of the common council dated February eighteenth, nineteen ninety-two. The hearing is now declared open.
Well, this is a public hearing regarding the adoption of the local law number one for nineteen ninety-two. I would like to say at the outset that the, uh, hearing will be restricted to any comments regarding that local law. If there are anything that anybody else wants to, uh, say to the council after the hearing is closed on the public, or rather, the public hearing is closed, then of course you'll have that opportunity. Otherwise, please hold your comments unless they directly relate to this, uh, particular local law. Any, uh, discussion or comments by the council?
I, I think we'd like to hear from the public first, and...
Okay. Anyone want to be heard? No one? Diana?
Congratulations, George. You finally fill the house. Five mayors I've been to have never seen this before. Uh, just what is the duty of the planning commission?
Pardon?
What is the duty of the planning commission? I mean, what are they supposed to do?
Now, this has nothing to do with, uh, any commission except the Fire and Police Commission.
Just the strictly the Fire and Police Commission?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with any other board or commission.
Then they, that's all they have to take care of them is, um, what they have to do, nothing with two people here at all.
No. Now, this is solely dealing with the Fire and Police Commission.
They don't have direct, I mean, what they, what does, what, what does the planning, or, I mean, the Fire and Police Commission take care of? Do they bring things to the council, or...
Well, they have the authority to, uh, over the Fire and Police Departments at present time. This local law will give the, uh, common council in effect the power of veto over any resolutions passed by the Fire and Police Commission.
Only if this thing goes through? I mean, this is what you're up here for, to find out who can veto what they have to say, or is it strictly, has it always been this way, or did they always make the decisions before?
Yeah, they always made the decisions before. Those decisions will be subject now to review by the commission if this, uh, local law is passed. It will amend the charter. In effect, their role is really going to be an advisory role.
That isn't what they are now, advisory? They've always done this on their own before?
Yeah, yes.
And so now they'll advise the council more or less than what they want to have to do with their department?
Right, just like the Recreation Commission.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Mayor, members of the council, my name's Don Bullard, and I'm here to urge you to unanimously pass the resolution number one, taking power away from the Fire and Police Commission and placing the direct responsibility for appointment on the members of the common council and the mayor. Thank you.
Yes, dear.
Uh, I think that it's time that the people, uh, that we elected you as mayor should start calling you Mayor or Mr. Valet. I don't think anybody in this hall should call you by your first name but your wife, Linda.
It has nothing to do with...
I appreciate what you're saying. I, I don't feel that addressing me by my first name denotes any lack of respect. When I was judge, and people started calling me Judge outside of the courtroom, I objected because I've been George for so many years, and it sounded strange to begin with, and, uh, frankly, uh, I prefer George. Anyone else? Yeah, want to come up, please?
My name is Sue Bartlett. I'm a resident of Fulton and also a tax payer. I think it's quite obvious, we're all here for the same reason. A lot of them are for you to make the change, a lot of us are not for us. I'd just like to say that there's quite a few people in this room, and I really feel, as a tax payer, to bring out the voting machines and let us all decide. Nobody here. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as a matter of fact, it's the opinion of the, uh, city attorney and myself that a public referendum is required in this case, and that's something that will be researched. Anyone else?
Might I suggest that you read out the resolution so the people here have an opportunity to hear it again before they discuss it?
Sure.
Local law number one of nineteen ninety-two, which reads, "Be it enacted by the common council of the City of Fulton as follows: That a new section, being section one fifty-one of the City Charter, is hereby adopted as follows. Section one fifty-one of Title VII of the City Charter entitled 'Authority of Board of Fire and Police Commissioners: A) That the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners shall act only in advisory capacity and at all powers and duties of the said Board as set forth in Title VII of this Charter and in any other title or section of the City's, City Charter shall be subject to the approval of the common council by resolution of said common council. B) Within five calendar days after the passage of any resolution by the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, the clerk of said Board shall file a certified copy of said resolution with the City Clerk, the mayor, and members of the common council. The common council shall approve or reject all resolutions adopted within thirty calendar days after the date of filing with the City Clerk. The failure of the common council to approve or reject any resolution of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners shall be deemed to be an approval of said resolution. C) That this local law, number one of nineteen ninety-two, shall take effect immediately upon its passage in accordance with the municipal whole new law of the State of New York and any provision of the City Charter concerning the adoption of a local law."
Any other comments?
Would you mind reading how that, uh, section, uh, reads as it is now, and what the difference, I, so we can see what the difference is from the way it presently is to how you plan on changing it?
Well, you know, briefly, what it says is that the Fire and Police Commission consists of three members, appointed by the mayor to serve a term of two years, so that every two years, there's a new board that's appointed or commissioned. They have the control and governance of the appointment of officers within the Fire and Police Departments, and their promotions, and the governance of their, uh, respective departments. In effect, they make all the decisions regarding the governance, governments, governance, I think that's the right word, of those departments. All of those decisions now will be subject to review by the, uh, common council, and the common council, if they don't agree with it, can override it. Well, anyone else?
Mayor George, the last, and counsel.
Yes, dear.
You have very three capable men on that commission, and I'm not going to throw stones at those guys, they're, they're very capable people. The problem I have with local law, one of the way it is right now, is you have three appointed people by an elected official who audit all the bills for the Fire and Police Departments, which is a very large amount on the general budget. That's the problem I have, that's why I urge you to pass this new resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments by the council? Yeah, sure.
My name is Hugh McKenzie, I've lived in Fulton for seventeen years, kind of date myself to a degree. Uh, we have more divisiveness in this community right now with the Fire and Police Commission. I can't remember channels three with the bright lights, and five and nine here. We're here now because in Central New York, are we being laughed at? Do we have such divisiveness in our Fire and Police Commission with well-meaning people that for some reason the power has gone to a certain degree, and now we're pitting one against the other? All the community is asking is the people to get elected, and Jack Brooke ran in my district, is for the commission, is for the common council to make the decision of the commission. The commission did not run for election. The commission's got us on three, five, and nine a night being laughed at locally in Central New York. It's embarrassing where I work, because I work with a lot of people from Central New York community, and we're a ha-ha for what's happened. Let's start turning professional. If the professional means the common council assumes the responsibility, then assume the responsibility, gentlemen, you got elected. I know everybody's going to, not everybody's going to agree with you. That's democracy, but please assume the responsibility. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? David?
Your honor, I have just a few things that I would like to put out there for you people to think about. I did take a poll in the fifth ward, contacted a lot of people. The main concern with the people that I talked to, number one, was if the power is given to the council by passing this new law, that there is a strong possibility of illegal conflict of interest, trying to represent these people both as their employer to negotiate for them, and trying to represent the public, and saving them money. That's kind of a two-way street, and I really don't know how we would do that. But more than that, um, through talking to some of the people in my ward, I had one of the constituents that came up with an idea that I think has a lot of merit to it. That being that if there's going to be a change in the charter, instead of jacking powers back and forth, that the powers that have always been and up until this time have proven worthy with the Fire and Police Commission, that that commission should be expanded to five people, that one should be appointed by the mayor, one by the council, one by the CSA union, one by the fire, and one by the police, all of which at the time that they are put on this board or commissioned, they do not have any direct responsibility to any department thereof. I think that would give fair representation to everybody.
Any other member of the council wish to speak? I have to make this comment. That provision in the charter has worked for ninety years, because this charter was established in nineteen oh two, at the time the city was incorporated. And I wonder if it's worthwhile to change that to accommodate one disputed appointment in those ninety years. But if that's, of course, what the council wants to do, that's what it'll do.
Your honor, I think that goes far beyond just the appointment of the police chief. I mean, we've had problems with the Fire and Police Commission since January first, uh, with the K-9 units as such, and I feel as an elected representative of my constituents, it's in, uh, their best interests that I best represent them in any possible fashion, and I might be able to do that, and I feel as an appointed commission, uh, I'm not giving my people the best representation that I can give them, where a three-member panel can sit there and make decisions, and we're held accountable for it.
Well, if it turns out that, uh, the mandatory referendum is required in this case, then of course the people will have a chance to vote on it, and that, if that's their decision, then, uh, I certainly don't have any quarrel with it. Ron?
Uh, mayor, you said that, uh, it's worked since nineteen oh two, the Fire and Police Commission as is, and that's probably true, but as of January first, this was the first time in many years that it's ever been all one-party commission. January first, you appointed three Republican people to the Fire and Police Commission, of which Floyd Haskins, of which Floyd Haskins has been on for many years through more than one administration, and all of a sudden quit over what he termed as the underhandedness of what was going on when the other two members came on board. Now, it's, it's, I, I honestly believe David's idea is a good idea, to make it a nonpartisan commission, but, uh, to say it's worked since nineteen oh two is true, but it has never worked the way it was January first, because it's the first time in a long time through both Republican and Democratic mayors that they ever appointed all members of one party to that commission.
Well... I don't go back to nineteen two, Ron, I didn't know you did either, so that I can't verify that what you say is true. At present time, there is one independent and two Republicans on the board. Yes, I think David Halsted's idea is a good idea, uh, but again, if, uh, people want to approve this resolution, I, or the local law, I have no problem with it. Yes?
I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
I'm Sylvia Preston. Number one, I don't agree with David. Number two, let's put the Republicans aside and the Democrats aside and do what's best for the people that live here in Fulton. That is my comment, and I'm for the resolution.
Mayor?
Yes?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I guess my, my feelings on this are not to limit the work of the Fire and Police Commission. I think they do have a responsibility, uh, to go out and do some work. Obviously, the council can't do everything. I do think that if I'm to properly represent my people, that this commission should be advisory in nature, and let them come back to the council with their recommendations. You know, we've been, we've been talking about this for a long time now, I've had a lot of phone calls from people in my ward on their feelings, and you know, it's getting old, you know? I just think we need to get on with some other business in this city, and I think we need a, a police chief that's appointed by the council, so let's get on with the business.
Anyone else?
I may have missed, and that's well-versed in politics, but I apologize for the question that comes across as ignorant. You say you want to put a member from the, from the, like, the, the police union, or the police department on the commission, and one from the fire department?
Not one from the department, one that is picked by the departments.
But, but you said before, the council can't take it, can't really make the decisions because you negotiate with the police department and the fire department, right?
We are, we are a two-handed entity here.
But how, how, aren't you a two-handed entity with the fire? We go into the police group and say, appoint somebody, and the fire group, you appoint somebody, isn't that getting back to being a two-handed entity again?
No, you have five entities into there, which everybody is equally represented.
But somehow, I must be... But somehow, I must be missing something. Because you just said the fire department could pick somebody, and the police department could pick somebody. But that's okay for negotiations. But the council can't make decisions because they, they are involved in negotiations.
We would not overrule the decision of those five people. They would still have the power they have now.
Oh, so wouldn't you not for an advisory group then? You're for the, the commission making a final decision?
Of five people.
And the council abdicating any decision responsibility with that? Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't understand your mark.
Russ?
I agree with Dave's idea. It seems like the people are confused and seem to shift with the wind. When people run for office for mayor, they said they wanted the mayor and the council to run the city like a corporation. When a chief executive officer is in place in a corporation, the employees don't tell him how to run his corporation. I mean, I work for Boston. I can't tell them how to run.
Let him finish, please. Nobody interrupted the other speakers.
And if every time something comes up that we don't agree with and we want to change the law, how are we ever going to get to the business of running the city and looking at the budget and prove whether or not we have money or not to run the city?
Anybody else?
You say that you agree with his idea, but an employee can't come back and question the CEO of a company. But with his idea, you've got a union rep. Now, you've got somebody appointed by the police department and somebody appointed by the fire department. Okay? Now, I'm not saying it's a bad idea if this does come about and the initial resolution gets knocked down. But the way you're talking about it, how are you going to have, you're still going to have people from those departments telling him what to do or making decisions by it? Who is on the police department? Who on the fire department are you going to appoint those people? Or who from the CSA is going to be on there?
No, at the ti-
Those are the employees. How can the, those employees?
No, at the time, not to interrupt you, but at the time that I said that, that they, these people were not to be directly connected to any department.
How can they be appointed by the department?
It might be, it might be a retired, it might be a retired fire chief. It might be a retired chief of police. I don't know. But so long as they are not directly working in that department at the time, they've had the knowledge to represent them.
Your other question on it, in that you as the board, you feel that there's conflict of interest. That you're trying to save us money, but you're also bargaining with the employees. You as the board and you as the council, you are the employer of those people. And we are the people that are paying for it. How is there a conflict of interest as you making the recommendations on what to do with these departments?
If in fact, we had the power to do that, we would then have the power to hire and fire, which we do not have in the other departments. They're run by department heads.
So what is...
In, in, in reality, by giving us that power, by passing this local law, you now make us to assume that same position as a department head for these other two departments. And I don't think that's what was intended for us to represent all of the people.
Then why isn't the fire department run by Marv Jensen? And why isn't the police department run by the police chief? Who appoint, or who appoints the other department heads? Are they people that are hired? Or are those people that are appointed by the council? I mean, is there a commission for the DPW commission? Is there, you know, a water department commission that picks the head of the water department? I mean, how is that run? Why is-
There are committees that are set up.
So are the committees set up by?
By the mayor. Standing committees appointed by the mayor. Thank you.
Gentlemen, my, my comments go back to the issue raised by Mr. Belfiore. First of all, I think that the people here this evening, the majority of people here this evening, have a problem that is a process. The fire and police commission in this city was created in nineteen two, and it served a very useful purpose. Those were tough times in nineteen two, when jobs were hard to come by. And politically, by having the fire and police commission appoint a chief of police, it took the council off the hook to create a job. This is nineteen ninety-two. The council and the mayor select and hire every department head in this city. This is not a case of the employees hiring their supervisor. This in fact is an issue over the people running these departments being accountable to the common council and the mayor. You do not, as this gentleman said, hire a DPW commissioner with a DPW commission. You do not hire a recreation commissioner with a recreation commissioner. You do not hire a city engineer with an engineering commission. The people here this evening, the majority of people here this evening, are saying that the common council is accountable to the voters in this city at the voting booth. The fire and police commission is not, I emphasize, not accountable to the people in the voting booth. And I ask you people this evening to assume the responsibility and the authority that you require to appoint your own department heads. And let's end this discussion and get on with fixing streets and putting this city back together.
Yes, sir. We have a name, please?
Yeah, Green Spencer. You probably put a lot of thought in your, your idea there with the one Republican, one Democrat, appointed by the police, appointed by the fire, appointed by the CSA. Probably put a lot of thought in that. And you too, Ross, right? Probably a lot of thought in that. So what you're really saying is that you want to put the control of the police and fire commission in charge of the three bargaining units for the city of Fulton that you employ? You're going to give the power to us? Pass it! We're going to get raises every year then? That doesn't even make sense!
So what else is new? John?
Yeah, John Oden. Uh, I think this young fellow right here, uh, he misunderstood what he said. He, he's going to, they're going to have the firemen, policemen, et cetera, pick a person, not necessarily a policeman and fireman. I understand that. Uh, my problem with the commission the way it is now, uh, Ron Patrick is almost right, driven and dependent. As far as I'm concerned, there's no checks or balances. There should be a Democrat, as far as I'm concerned, the opposite. But you've got two ex-policemen on that commission. That is the problem. I always thought it would be a good, it'd be nice to have an ex-fireman, ex-policeman on there, until they're here. But Charlie Marks was a policeman. Brian Kefel was a policeman, and it's not working. You got, you got a conflict of interest. You got a power trip. You've got something going down there. And I for one, being an ex-policeman, am sick to death, sick to death of what they're doing to my police department. I was very proud to have been a police officer here, but I'm not right now. You're tearing this place apart. Those three men. I don't know the third man. I don't even know who he is. But one of these, some of these guys are, they're, they're on a power trip or they got an axe to grab.
John, if I could, how do you feel about the five-man board?
I have nothing, I have nothing wrong with that. If these guys can go out and pick a police, and pick a person to represent them, but don't for God's sake pick a policeman or a fireman, it's stupid.
Never thought I'd hear a policeman say that.
Why? I always thought it was a great idea, until Brian Kefel and Charlie Marks were appointed.
Well, I, I did too.
It's ridiculous.
Apparently it was.
Thank you.
But I, I would, I would imagine probably the conservatives and independents would not agree with you that say that only Democrats and Republicans should be appointed to boards. Well, so far, I've appointed six people. Two of them are Republicans, two are Democrats, and two are independent. They, they need a bad mix. Well, I'm sorry. Anybody else? Anyone else from the council?
Your honor, just to elaborate on what Don Bullard was saying, um, last year, we had to appoint a new superintendent of recreation. And the way we did that was to have the recreation commission and the common council interview with the three people who were up for that job. We did the interview and all agreed on who we thought should be the, the person to take over that job. And I think this is basically what we're trying to do with the fire and police departments, to work together with the commission and do it in a fair way and come up with the best person. That's just one example for hirings and, and anything else to do with the fire and police departments.
Well, as I said before, I don't have any quarrel with however the selection process goes, whether by referendum or by the council. That's entirely up to the, uh, council and referendum if it's required. Mr. Liddington wants to address regarding the referendum.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I've done some research with respect to passage of the local law. Certainly, the city council has the power to adopt, amend, or repeal local laws with certain restrictions. Uh, certain restrictions whereby section twenty-three of the municipal home rule law would require a mandatory referendum. Since, uh, this law would abolish, transfer, or curtail any power of an executive officer, I believe that it would require a mandatory referendum of the people of Fulton. Uh, I've discussed this matter with the corporation council of the city of Syracuse, and they agree. Uh, the issue becomes, however, whether or not you're really restricting the power of the board and/or an executive power. And I think that needs to be looked in further. And I intend to contact the attorney general. However, at this time period, I believe a special election is required within sixty days. And a mandatory referendum, uh, given to the electorate would be required.
Thank you, Spencer. Anybody else? Ready for the motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Roll call, vote please.
What, your honor?
This is a motion to adopt the local law. Is that what you're doing, correct?
That's right.
Your honor?
Yes.
At this time, due to the fact that there are legalities possibly for public referendum, and due to the fact that there may be a legal apprehension of this thing due to conflict of interest, I would like to table the vote.
Well, I would like to, I would like-
I think we, I think we have two motions.
I would like, I would like to move on this.
Well, you got a motion to table, which takes priority. You have to act on-
No, no.
I, I think we have two resolutions to vote on it.
Right, you know.
I think we have to, you have-
I think, your honor, I, if I might make a little comment, uh, we are not limiting your powers, appointment, just the commission that he appoints. And I, I think that, uh, what Spencer said was correct. And if it needs to go to a public referendum, we'll, we'll do that too. But I would like to move on this tonight.
Well, it-
I mean, we gotta, we gotta move forward on this. And I think if we adopt this tonight, as I hope we will, uh, that'll be just one step closer to, uh, you know, having us have the power if it needs to go to a referendum. Because we aren't sure yet.
That's right. That's right.
Just, just to further some clarification, that you can vote, uh, if it becomes, if there's no mandatory referendum, then, and if there is required to be a mandatory referendum, the law would be invalid. You can vote. But I believe that the mandatory referendum is required within sixty days of today's date.
I, I still have a motion on the floor though.
David?
I would like to take a vote.
Yep. I withdraw the motion to table. Your honor, I withdraw the motion. The motion to table is withdrawn.
Okay, let's vote, Joe.
We're going to vote by, okay? Roll call, vote please. You're voting on the, uh, resolution to adopt the, uh, local law.
Okay, this, um, this is to adopt. Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Lincoln and Mr. Myers II. First ward.
Yeah.
Second ward.
Uh, just a couple of quick comments. Uh, I consulted, uh, some past mayors. I consulted some past aldermen that sat here before us because I hold them in high regard and respect, respect them greatly. Not only that, uh, my phone rang off the hook asking me to support this resolution, so I so do have to. I, my vote is yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
In due respect, to the constituents in my ward in the poll that was taken, representing their vote, I have to vote no.
Sixth ward?
No.
The motion's carried?
Carried. Okay, well, shall we move to go? Oh, yeah. All right, oh, yeah. Discussion items. Item one.
Resolve that the city engineer and the DPW commissioner be authorized to prepare specifications for tree and stump removal in the city of Fulton, New York, to be returned to this common council for advertisement for competitive bidding at a fut- future common council meeting.
Joe, I would like to add one tree to that list. Uh, corner of Worth and Third. Fuck, did you hear that?
Did you?
I want to add a tree to that tree list, a corner of Worth and Third.
Have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor, indicate by aye.
Your honor?
Yes.
Just, uh, common, I would, since we have so many new aldermen, I would recommend that the new aldermen, or all the aldermen, get together with, with Mr. Graham to see what trees are already on the list. They might not know what they are. And if, in case they have any others to, to add to it.
Good idea. Yeah. Uh, okay, the motion's already been moved. And all in favor, indicate by aye.
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 Opposed, no. Unanimously carried. Next item, please.
Resolve that chapter one sixty-five of the vehicle and traffic ordinance of the city of Fulton, New York, be amended to read as follows. One-way traffic eastbound on Emery Street from Wall Street to East Broadway, provisionally for a period not to exceed a hundred and twenty days.
I'll move it. Second.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by no. Unanimously carried. Okay, there are items that have to be taken up in the executive session. One is proposed land acquisition. The other is collective bargaining negotiations. And the third is a personnel matter dealing with promotion. No, I wrote them all out, read them all out.
Item number two has been removed from the discussion.
I'm sorry.
was the deciding factor, as Fulton's common council voted to change its ninety-year-old city charter. An overflow crowd forced the meeting to be moved to the city's high school from City Hall, and the vote came in less than an hour. Speaker after speaker called for the council to have more say in fire and police appointments, particularly its police chief.
Let's start attorney profession, yes, professional means that the council assumes the responsibility, and assumed responsibility, gentlemen, you got elected, and not everybody's going to agree with you.
I was very proud of that police officer here, but I'm not right now, you're tearing this place apart.
The vote in effect limits the powers of the mayor's Fire and Police Commission, it refutes his choice for police chief.
The people were already angry at the commission, and they're already angry at the mayor, and because of that, uh, there are some that are angry at me.
The city attorney has sixty days now to determine whether the law now goes to public reference.
John, the change involves power, specifically a power shift from the Police and Fire Commission to the city council. In Fulton tonight, the cops are learning about a new way of listing fingerprints, testing out the new technology. Next door at the fire station, Captain Woolden washes off the truck after a basement fire on Fourth Street. For about ninety years, the Police and Fire Departments have been controlled by the Police and Fire Commission, a three-member panel appointed by the mayor, that's about to change. At a meeting tonight, councilors decided to strip the commission of its power, making the commission get council approval before doing anything.
As an appointed commission, uh, I'm not giving my people the best representation that I can give them, where a three-member panel can sit there and make decisions and we're held accountable for it.
The law was proposed after councilors were shut out of the commission's deliberations to choose a new police chief, prompting the mayor to warn councilors about changing the law that's been on the books for decades.
I wonder if it's worthwhile to change that to accommodate one disputed appointment in those ninety years.
Despite the warning, councilors went ahead and passed it, much to the delight of those in the audience.
You got conflict of interest, you got power trip, you got something going down there, and I don't want to be a bad policeman, and sick to death, sick to death of what they're doing to my Police Department. I was very proud of that police officer here, but I'm not right now, you're tearing this place apart.